Good evening. As Chairman of the Pitt County Planning Board, I do call our November meeting to order. And at this time, I ask Ms. Tabitha if she will do a roll call.
Fred Austin.
Present.
Don Brown.
Present.
Naomi Buck.
Here.
Thompson Forbes. Lyman Hardy.
Here.
John Landron. Steve Little.
Here.
And Charles McGlawn.
Here.
And Mr. Chairman, we received notice that David Davenport, Madison Downing, and RJ Hemby would not be present to none.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. We do constitute a quorum. At this time, we're going to ask that we stand. Mr. Don Brown is going to lead us in prayer, followed by Mr. Lyman Hardy, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
Let us pray. To Heavenly Father, we humbly bow down this afternoon, Lord, to say thank you for allowing us to be here this afternoon. Lord, bless this planning board meeting, bless our leader, give us strength and guidance. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, sir. At this time, I will ask for a motion for the approval of the minutes of our last meeting.
Second.
Second, Don Brown.
I have a motion by Mr. Lyman Hardy and a second by Mr. Don Brown, that we might approve the minutes of the last meeting. Any conversation? All in favor, let it be known by raising of the right hand. All opposed? Like sign. Motion passes. At this time, I will ask, and I don't see any disrespect, but if there are any public addresses to the board. This time, I'll close the public address to the board. Board members, if you would, as you look at your planned agenda, I'm going to ask that we move item number seven to this point now. And this is the Shannon Hodges rezoning. And Ben, is there anything you'd like to share with us here? And I think there is, okay?
We did get a request earlier this week from Linwood Stroud with Stroud Engineering. He is the engineer for the Shannon Hodges rezoning. I believe the letter was in your packet or placed in front of you this evening. Just requesting that that rezoning request be postponed till a later date. There are some site plan issues, specifically with the access that NC DOT has provided comments on, that they're trying to work with Gene Pittman with NC DOT to address the comments for access for that project. And again, they did request that that rezoning be postponed. So since the agenda was already prepared, we did want to bring it before you guys and have official discussion on that. And happy answering questions if you have any.
Thank you, Ben. So, board members, we do have a request to postpone this item of business until a later date.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion. We honor their request to postpone.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Hardy and a second by Mr. McGlawn, that we do postpone according to the request that has been asked by Mr. Stroud. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed? Like sign. The motion passes.
Thank you. And we will be bringing that back in a future meeting.
Thank you, sir. As we look back, I believe, Eric, you really could come before us.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We do have two other rezoning requests for you tonight. The first is for Sawyer's Property Management Group. The rezoning is, or request to rezonate 22.38 acres. It's owned by, it's two entities, but it's the same ownership. It's Sawyer's Property Management Group and PND Property Management Group. As I said, there's three parcel numbers, 656918442686348. These are all located on Corey Road. They're requesting to go from rural residential to general commercial conditional district. They're requesting several uses to be permitted under that district. Athletic fields, coin-operated amusement, miniature golf course, go-kart raceway, private club or recreation facility, indoor sports and recreation club, and a restaurant without a drive-through. And I'll just note that of those uses, the property does have Sawyer's Fun Park as well as a cheerleading facility. And so those are covered under, or these, some of these proposed uses cover those existing uses. So the only two new uses that are really under consideration as far as this request is the miniature golf and the go-kart raceway. This is the area you see. It's sort of in a donut hole right in the city's jurisdiction off of Corey Road, just north of Worthington Road. This is a portion of the property. This is the northern section of the property. This is towards the back of that property as well. This is the area where the, this is sort of behind the Fun Park. This is where the go-kart track and the miniature golf are proposed. This is the existing Fun Park that's on the property. This is a shot of the Fame All-Stars Cheerleading Facility. And this is on, this is looking Corey Road back to the north, as if you're heading back into the city. And then this is to the south, as if you're heading towards Worthington Road. These are some existing adjacent residential uses. These are, these two residences in particular are right in front of the Fun Park or right off Corey Road. This is inside Corey Ridge subdivision, which is a subdivision to the north. That subdivision is actually in the city's jurisdiction, but this is just a view of, these residents here are off of, it was called Van Gert Drive, and they, they butt up directly to the back of the Sawyer property. And this is just some more residential properties on Corey Road on the, on the other side, as well as some other residences. And then the property is right next to Boyd Lee Park, which is also in the city's jurisdiction. So this is a view of the park from Corey Road. And then this is a view of the park. They have a new beach volleyball facility, which you see there on the left. This would be from the backside, sort of where the golf car, or where the golf course would be proposed to be. And you see, they already, the Fun Park does have some existing screening also as well that's been put in place, meets our regulations. The land use plan does designate the parcel as suburban residential, and you can see on this map, too, those areas in pink, those are the city jurisdiction. So those are inside the city limits. As I mentioned, it's sort of a donut hole there. You have several subdivisions to the east and west, and also to the north. To the west, there's a parcel between these, but splits the town of Winterville's jurisdiction with this parcel as well. Suburban residential, it's intended to include residential land uses, including single-family manufactured home subdivisions and manufactured home parks, limited multifamily, commercial office, light industrial, and public institutional uses that meet locational criteria. This designation is distinguished by the greater potential for development and the inclusion of a broader range of land uses. And that criteria would include, for non-residential uses would include frontage and access to a major state highway or secondary road, location in a major intersection, proximity to similar uses, and spatial separation from non-compatible uses such as existing residences or residential development. So the existing land uses, you see, there is the existing Sawyer's facility that's shown there in red, but primarily it's residential around it. We don't have the existing land use for the city jurisdictions, but you can see that, again, there are residential lots. And then to the south is at Boyd Lee Park. Pitt County zoning, it's primarily RR. And then if I flip on the city zoning layer, you see it's also primarily residential zoning, the RA-20, R9S, and then town of Winterville, R-20 and R-10. Those are all residential, single-family residential zones for those municipalities. General commercial is intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, limited wholesale, and moderate density multifamily uses in areas that have access to major thoroughfares and the necessary utilities for that type of development. And a conditional zoning district allows for the approval of a specific use with reasonable conditions to ensure it's compatible with neighboring properties. Again, that's the list of the proposed uses as well. Two of those uses do have specific development standards. Go-kart raceway, this board's familiar because you heard it a few months ago, where the request was to reduce the setback from residentially zoned property from, from 500 feet to 200 feet. We also did retain a 500-foot setback from any lot where there's an existing residence. So that, that setback is still the same as it was previously. It's just from those undeveloped or non-residential, residentially zoned properties like the park that would be subject to the 200-foot setback. There's also requirement that noise and dust may not adversely impact surrounding properties. They would need to provide security fencing along the boundary of the raceway. And there's hours of operation where they can only run between 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And the board added this condition, or this stipulation, which was adopted by the commissioners, that these types of raceways can only use electric go-karts, so they won't be able to use gas carts at all on this site. Private club and recreation facility is also requires, also has some development standards. The hours of operation for these types of facilities have to be compatible with adjacent land uses. Noise should not disrupt activities or adjacent land uses. They would have to provide sufficient parking for whatever the use is. If it's located, if it's a site that's three acres or more, it must be located on a collector or higher capacity road. Then you provide screening from adjoining single-family residences. And if they had any kind of outdoor pool, they'd have to provide some fencing, but there's no pool proposed for this, so that would not apply. This is the site plan that was submitted with the request. As I mentioned, there's three properties. This is the total boundary of those three properties. And then the area that's proposed for rezoning is to the southern two-thirds or so of the property. It's 22.38 acres, with the remainder to the north that butts up to Corey Ridge is nine and a half acres. And that would remain as rural residential. The site plan itself, again, this is the boundary of the areas proposed for rezoning. There are the existing facilities. Sawyer's Fun Park and Fame All-Stars Cheerleading, those are, those were permitted by our office as private recreation facilities. Sawyer's has added a restaurant in the meantime. When they expanded into Sawyer's Fun Park, they used to be Air U. They added on, added an additional, basically doubled the size of the facility, added a restaurant. And then Fame All-Stars was previously EC Cats, and that was in existence prior to our zoning They have a large existing parking area. And then the two uses that are, the two new uses that we proposed, again, the go-kart raceway and the miniature golf course sort of behind the Sawyer's Fun Park facility itself. There's a stormwater pond, an existing wooded area to the east, and then they have existing septic systems on the property itself. In terms of our recommendations, staffs reviewed it, and we found that the request is not consistent with our land use plan. It's designated suburban residential, but with that locational criteria, it doesn't meet those standards for general commercial. Again, that would be frontage and access to major state highway or secondary road, proximity to other similar commercially zoned uses, and spatial separation from non-compatible uses such as the existing residential development. Staff also finds the request is not reasonable and is not in the public interest due to the size of the area proposed for rezoning. Request is rezoned 22 acres to general commercial in an area that's predominantly zoned residential and is in very close proximity to several single-family residential subdivisions. So we just don't feel like it's an appropriate location for that much commercially zoned property. Therefore, staff does recommend denial of the request. This time, we'd like to entertain public comments, and the board will then make a recommendation of the board of commissioners, and the commissioners are scheduled to hold a public hearing on December 19th. And Mr. Chair, we do have in front of you, there's two emails that we've received. I'm not sure if the folks are here tonight. We received them from Lori and Mike Schwartz, and also Neil Boardman. And I'm not going to read the whole emails. If they're here tonight, they can go through it if they'd like. But just the gist of the emails were concerns about the traffic, particularly on Corey Road and the intersection with Worthington Road, existing noise from Sawyer's, particularly coming from their restaurant where they're having live music and karaoke nights outdoors. They're concerned about the potential noise surrounding the go-kart track, also the reductions of the buffer from the residential property. And just in general, they're opposed to the rezoning. But again, if they're here tonight, I don't know if they've signed up to speak, but they're welcome to come up and voice these comments again as well.
We also had a note from Brandon Mitchell. Did you just mention that?
That's the one that I handed you.
Okay, okay, good deal. All right. Also in opposition. Okay. All right. At this time, the board will open our meeting to comments. And let me just share with you, as I say, we've got several folks that have signed up to speak tonight toward this item, and I would advise you that we do have, for each one that comes and gives your name and your address, along with realizing we have three minutes to speak. And I'll ask that we adhere to that criteria, especially tonight, for the number that have signed up. That being said, I'll open this session and ask for Ms. Louise McElroy.
My name is Louise McElroy, and I do live in Corey Ridge subdivision.
Speaking to the mic, please.
Is that good?
Good.
Yes, ma'am.
Again, good afternoon. My name is Louise McElroy, and I live in Corey Ridge subdivision. I strongly recommend this rezoning request be denied based on the following points. One, currently, there are 62 houses in Corey Ridge subdivision, 74 houses in Blackwood subdivision. This does not include an additional seven-plus subdivisions on Corey Road. This rezoning will undoubtedly affect property values, which in turn will affect the amount of taxes the city of Greenville can collect, something I'm sure the city of Greenville would not embrace. Two, there will be an increase in traffic on an already high-traffic Corey Road. This will become a problem like is currently on Old Tar Road. This will, at the same time, increase the amount of road noise. Currently, traffic entering and exiting Corey Road at Worthington Stop Sign is a huge problem and the site of many accidents. The increase in traffic will affect all subdivisions along Corey Road, not just those living in Corey, not just those living in Sawyer's Fun Park backyard. Three, currently, there is an increase in light pollution from Sawyer's Fun Park. Adding an outside go-kart raceway and miniature golf course will only add to the current light pollution. Four, currently, there is a high volume of noise from Sawyer's Fun Park. From our home, we are forced to listen to music come from karaoke night, open mic night, and live music in the courtyard. It is my understanding that this is only allowed inside. However, we see how these rules are being broken without regard for their neighbors. No quiet enjoyment at our home. In this month's issue of the Greenville Living Magazine, in the resident feature section, there is a three-page article titled, "Meet the Energetic and Fun Sawyers." The article states the Sawyers live in Irish Creek subdivision. TJ says, and I quote, "It is very quiet and peaceful area, while also young and vibrant." My subdivision used to be quiet and peaceful, but not since Sawyer's Fun Park arrived. At first, it didn't seem that it was going to cause any problems. However, they have slowly expanded, and now the quiet and peaceful property we purchased is no more. If they are given permission to continue to expand on this 33-acre property, it will not only get worse for those living close to Sawyer's Fun Park, but for those who travel Corey Road. Thank you in advance for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that, Ms. McElroy.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Jerry McElroy, I live in Van Gert Drive, also in Corey Ridge subdivision. Thank you for allowing citizens to speak on this issue. I know this request has been batted around by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners for a while now. Hopefully, this rezoning request will be fairly evaluated. As citizens, most of us know the decisions of local governments are sometimes based on factors like money, influence, power, and under-the-table deals, just saying. Sawyer's Fun Park, fun for who? Not the residents in the local vicinity, not the schoolchildren who may be working on homework or school projects or have their bedtime, not the people traveling down Corey Road, and certainly not for the two families that live directly in front of Sawyer's operation. I feel sorry for them most of all. I felt badly for the Sawyers when COVID and Governor Cooper shut down their entire operation in the middle of their big expansion. However, I no longer feel badly for the Sawyers. Their expansion shatters the quiet of our evenings with loud music from their outdoor patio area. The outdoor lighting of the Sawyers just adds to the already overwhelming lights from the H Boyd Lee Park on the other side of Sawyer's operation. In this case, more is certainly not better. The original decision to allow, to allow intrusive commercial operations so near peaceful residential neighborhoods shows very poor judgment on the part of the city of Greenville and the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. I humbly ask, as a retired tax-paying resident, that you don't make things even worse by approving Sawyer's request to reduce the buffer zone between their commercial operation and local residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Elizabeth Hodges, and my address is 5142 Corey Road in Winterville. And I'm one of the two residential properties that's sandwiched by this zoning proposal. We have lived in our home for almost 10 years and never imagined that we would be facing a battle such as this. When we purchased our home in April of 2013, Sawyer's Fun Park was not established. Had it been, we probably would not have purchased the property. The land Sawyer's is built on was beautiful farmland where we enjoyed watching wildlife from our back porch. Now, we can't even sit outside to enjoy our own property due to the noise and commotion they present. Still today, I do not know how they have gotten this far in the process without a public hearing on the matter. However, that's not why we're here tonight. I plead with you to please listen to our concerns, along with my neighbors who have come out and/or written a letter in opposition. To begin, the noise we currently deal with is simply out of control. As mentioned earlier, it is already hard for my family to enjoy our own backyard, as all we hear is loud music with high levels of bass and screaming individuals. It can be so bad that my house literally shakes. There have been times where we are sitting in our living room, trying to watch a movie or football game as a family, and yet, the noise from their properties overtakes us. We have been forced to call the sheriff's office numerous times over this issue, and I would encourage you to go pull all of those records. Bedtime is another battle I face daily due to the noise. Having a six-year-old daughter who is present tonight and just started kindergarten, rest is vital for her. And right now, because of Sawyer's, I am missing the mark as her mother. As a parent, it is my job to advocate for her in all areas, and that is one of the top reasons I'm here today. Another issue that concerns me with this proposal is the increased traffic it would bring. Corey Road is a narrow two-lane road that can get congested as it is now, especially near the intersection of Worthington. There are many wrecks already at this intersection, and it will only get worse if this proposal moves forward. With wrecks come the chance of a life, of a life to be lost, and this proposed zoning change increases that risk. If you drive down Corey Road, you will also notice that there is not any commercial property currently on it. Other than two religious establishments and Boyd Lee Park, it is a true residential area. If you allow this proposal to go through, the property values of all of our homes will be affected, that can cause economic hardship to many. I have many other concerns regarding this proposed change, to include its effect on our environment, the amount of unsupervised children it could bring, possible changes in crime rates, and simply fear of the unknown of what the Sawyers would add or change about their property. There have been reports of future waterpark features, skating rinks, indoor go-karts, in addition to the outdoor one, and the list goes on and on. It seems as if so much of this process has been done behind the scenes, and those of us who are neighbors have been left out to dry with no knowledge or insight as to what is happening. It is simply unfair. With all this said, I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Caitlin, I hope we do this right. Caitlin Kerner?
Good job, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Hello. My name is Caitlin Kerner, and my house is one of the many houses in the Corey Ridge subdivision on Van Gert Drive, whose property lines shared, are shared with the land proposed for rezoning. Today, I'm here to address you, to consider the negative impact this rezoning and subsequent development of this land will have not only on my families, but all of my neighbors on Corey Road. First, a major concern, as many have spoken tonight, is that further development of this land would increase the noise, lights, and overall disturbances to the residents that live there. Many of our houses were established a decade before Sawyer's even purchased this land. Noise levels coming from the current established Sawyer's outdoor patio on multiple occasions have been so loud, I have been able to record the music, lyrics, and cheering from my own back porch. These concerns now increase with the expansion of their attractions onto land even closer to my property. This increased development would bring more music, more crowds, and additional noise from further attraction sacrificing my family's right to enjoy our own property. The lights pollution would flood into my yard, porch, and windows continually to negatively impact my family. So we address the economical impact this land would have to our wildlife. There is a creek that separates my property from the Sawyer's property. It runs into the Fork Swamp Stream. Has there been studies to evaluate that this runoff from this developed land would have to our waterways? Beyond these reasons, the increased traffic on Corey Road would need to be addressed by the county and municipalities for not only the safety of the drivers, but also our children and pedestrians. Pitt County Schools has many established bus route stops directly stopping on Corey Road. With increased commercial traffic on this two-lane residential road, we risk our children's safety as they wait or unload from their own school buses. As Corey Road is a residential road with many subdivisions, children's and families often cross Corey Road on a daily basis for walks and runs. Even Pitt County Schools utilize our subdivision and Corey Road for their own cross-country practices. Multiple houses on Corey Road have to cross Corey Road to reach their own mailboxes on the opposite side of Corey. Significant government investment would be needed to ensure that the safety of the pedestrians in this area is a top priority if any further commercial traffic would be increased. I ask the Pitt County Planning Committee to hear our plea to not support this rezoning. The safety and overall well-being of our children, families, and houses are placed in your hands. Please take into consideration all you hear today and the written statements as proof of the negative impact this rezoning will have on our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mike Kerner?
Hi, thank you. I'm Mike Kerner. I live on Van Gert and Corey Ridge as well. I'd like to start by basically just kind of saying, I had a speech set up, ditto to everything that's been said, that doesn't detract from everything that's been said. I can't emphasize that enough. I wanted to focus more on a kind of hypothetical situation of what if we do approve this rezoning? And I'd like to go back to July 2020, the owners of Sawyer, or Air U at that time, and now Sawyer's, the Sawyer family, had 40 plus fines for COVID restrictions. People have their own thoughts on COVID. We're not going to get into that tonight, but I think it's a sign and a symbol of a businessman that does not respect the local government and likes to try and push limits. And my biggest concern is, if we do this rezoning, what will be next? Will it be a water park? Will it be all the things that we've talked about? There's also a discussion about if he's even permitted to have outside music, which he definitely does. The sheriff's been called, the records are available on that. I just, my biggest worry, and it's a hypothetical question to you guys, is what if we do allow this rezoning? What will it do to those neighborhoods, those neighbors, and all those kids that live out there? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Curtis Lee Mills.
I'd like to thank everybody that's come up here tonight, and I really appreciate the fact that so much has already been covered and has been readdressed with other people speaking tonight. I truly believe that it's not in the best interest of the area as far as it is once farmland with the Corey's and different things like that, but I really believe that we, as a community, are definitely all against this. And what I would like to see is something, you know, I can understand the idea of this, maybe in another location, because I could believe for Greenville, there'd be a lot of interest in it. But I just think when you put it in the area where it's going to be at, and my biggest concern is, I can see what's on the list of what is probably right now going to be is I can see what's on the list of what is probably right now going to be, you know, the dream right now, but what's going to come out today? Are there going to be any restrictions? Once it's established, you know, and rezoned, how much restrictions will be, what else can be added to what's going on there now? That's the biggest thing, because now we have a small idea of what's going to be going on, and I know some of the places are, things are already in place, but what comes later, and will there be any restrictions? Do we have noise, you know, as far as ordinances against how much noise can be made? I know that they've had to call the Sheriff's Office and different things like that, and I felt like in a way that has been addressed a little bit, but it is slower than what it was at one time, because I'm right there backed up to it also. So my idea is the fact that I know it's not good for our community, but then again, you know, as far as the Pitt County, I was reading here, and what it was saying is we're going to make a well-informed and educated recommendation. And a lot of times, we as a community, we feel like we know what's best for our area, because that's why we live there. That's why. My thing was, I was raised on a farm, and I had wide open land, and I could enjoy so much. Well, fortunately, I'm backed up to that property, and when I'm on my back porch, I feel like I'm home on the farm, because there is some openness there. I didn't have any idea that, you know, that maybe one day there would be maybe a subdivision there. And I didn't even like the idea having to look in somebody's backyard to see what they were doing, and they were watching me what I'm doing. But the thing is, is I felt like if there was ever going to be anything there, it would have been residential, and not something that was commercial. So the idea, like I said, right now, I feel like it's not a good fit for what's on Corey Road, or for the residents that are already there. As the lady stated, they've been there for decades, you know, never thinking that that would come into our community. Not saying it's a bad thing, I just think it's not the right thing for our community. So I just appreciate the time, but as I'm saying, I'm more concerned about what is in the future. You know, it's going to be something that's going to bring in more noise and more lights, because even though we have a buffer with the buildings already there, the ball field is already, you know, we get the lights there and all the noise. So I can imagine if something's closer, it's going to bring more lights and more noise. So I just want to appreciate the few moments I did have, and I'll be in prayer for the decisions going to be made.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Scott Anderson, address 2755B Charles Boulevard. I'm going to give you a little different perspective. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Sawyer, and we appreciate the opportunity to present this request. The property currently has several commercial structures located on it that are used for the operation of Sawyer's Fun Park and the All-Star Cheerleading. Mr. Sawyer is making the request to allow for the expansion of the business to add two outdoor recreational attractions that include go-karts and miniature golf. We believe that these two amenities will complement the existing indoor activities that are currently provided, which include laser tag, ninja warrior, trampoline park, amusement games, and a restaurant. We believe that the go-karts and the miniature golf will be a great addition to our community and will help to fill a void that currently exists by providing entertainment options for youth and families that currently have to travel out of town for these options. Although the general commercial does not meet the county's land use plan, we believe that the request for the conditional use zoning is consistent with the current use of the properties and is compatible with the adjacent land uses. The conditional zoning will restrict the use to only the additional recreational uses listed that will complement the existing indoor recreational uses and the outdoor recreational uses at the adjacent city of Greenville's Boyd Lee Park. Again, the general concerns that we've heard are light, noise, and traffic. Based on the latest available NC DOT data, Corey Road currently has average daily traffic volumes of 6,800 trips per day at the end closest to Fire Tower, 4,700 trips per day in front of Sawyer's, and 3,800 trips per day at the end closest to Worthington. The road has a design capacity of 12,000 trips per day. So the road has the capacity to handle increased traffic there. Furthermore, the go-kart tracks and Sawyer's Fun Park generate traffic at times that are off-peak for typical roadways. So that traffic would not be in the typical morning 8:00 AM commute or in the 5:00 PM commute. Their busy times are Friday, Saturday, Sunday, which is when the traffic on the road is typically less. As for the lights, the go-kart track will use the same lighting that is currently used for the parking lot. So we're not looking at big, bright lights like we have next door at Boyd Lee Park on the softball field. So the lights will not be any more impactful than the current parking lot lights. And regarding the noise, the proposed go-karts will be all-electric and are extremely quiet. I have some information from the manufacturer that states that the electric go-karts emit around 40 to 45 decibels at a 50-foot distance. The road noise from the street next to the facility generates roughly 70 decibels. So these are extremely quiet. The electric motors make no sound. The only noise you hear is the belt going around the pulleys. The carts also include speakers in the headrest, so the staff can communicate with the drivers of the cart directly through those headrests, so they won't have loudspeakers blasting noise out. The proposed track will be located more than 600 feet from the closest home. Just for reference, the development standards of Pitt County allow an airport within 300 feet of a residence and an amusement park within 200 feet. So we're way more than those minimum standards. Again, the recently revised standards require us to be at least 500 feet from an existing residence. The request is for a little more than 22 acres, but that includes a lot of the existing uses that are there. So the only portion that the rezoning will actually impact in the uses that we're requesting is less than three and a half acres, an area that will be a change of use from what's currently there. How much time have I got left?
No, we've got a little time left.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Timothy Jenks, I live at 2131 Tucker Road, which is in the Rosewood subdivision, which is to say that I think of all the people that have spoken here tonight, I live the furthest back across Corey Road from Sawyer's Air Park. And I used to take my children to Sawyer's Air Park, but I ceased to do so this summer after the noise from the existing use in the restaurant, the live music was making it impossible for my wife and I to enjoy our porch, and I'm in the back of Rosewood bordering on the city of Greenville, Tulsa Cove. The noise from that current usage is excessive. I'm sorry to hear what I've heard tonight about how that was permitted or the allowances for that were pushed, and I'm very concerned. Really, when you're talking about sound, absolute distance is not the issue. Sound carries. I'm happy to hear the crack of the softball and the hardballs coming from Boyd Lee Park when I'm in my backyard in the summer. To me, that's the sound of America. But rock music and the inter chatter banner of the band with the audience, that's not what I enjoy hearing, and I don't want to have the noise pollution from Sawyer's Air Park aggravated by go-karts, whether electric or whether gas. It's, as many have spoken to, it's ruining our suburban neighborhood. I bought in Rosewood 20 years ago. It was tobacco field on my backyard. I knew that wouldn't last forever. I was pleased to see that it was expanded into residential housing. I welcome that kind of development. I'm not a NIMBY, okay? But this is not consistent with the usage in the neighborhood, in the neighborhood that members of the community want to continue to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That completes the list of our folks that have signed up to comment on this item. At this time, I'm going to close this session of public comments. And Eric, is there anything else you want to mention at this time?
No, sir. I'll be glad to answer any questions, though, if I have any.
So I'm addressing the board now. Are there any questions that you'd like to address to Eric or to anyone that you've heard?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just want to compliment Eric, say a nice word about him. And he, you know, the reason this project should be denied is written in his report on page 50. And it says that it's not reasonable due to the size of the area, that it's not consistent with the comprehensive land use plan, which is a big deal for me, because I look at the comprehensive land use plan as our roadmap for how Pitt County is going to look now and in the future. But this says that the property is designated as suburban residential, doesn't meet the locational criteria. Because of the location of the roads, there's no access to a major state highway or secondary road, and there's not enough spatial separation between residential uses. So I want to compliment Eric on what I feel is a complete assessment of the reasons, you know, that this project should be evaluated as he has evaluated it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the board?
I have an additional comment. It was commented about the original conditional zoning. The impact of indoor activities at the facility was part of that condition. Moving everything, not everything, but moving additional activities outdoors makes a big difference.
Okay, thank you, sir. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion, which is our job now, to approve or deny this request for rezoning.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we would deny the request to rezon.
Second, Don Brown.
I have a motion and a second. A motion by Mr. Hardy, second by Mr. Brown, that this board deny this request for the rezoning. Any other comments? All in favor of that motion? Let it be known by the raising of the right hand. All opposed? Like sign. The motion to deny has been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I would like to say one, then.
Yes, ma'am.
I feel for you people, because Corey Road was where I was born. Jackson's Corey, and I was as scared of Vance Corey if he was a bear. I don't know why when I was a child. But our farm joined the Jackson's farm, and they were family, my grandmother's brother. And then the Corey man was not kin to us, but they were joining the farm. But as I sit here tonight, I never dreamed that I would be here and be hearing this, because I had to develop some land at Bellevue that I inherited through my family. And I had something to do, but when it was voted on, it went through so smooth. But I am so proud of all of you. Whatever what goes on, be determined that that was what God planned for you. We have no plan in our life. He plans our life.
Thank you, Ms. Pogue. Mr. Googie, our next item.
Sir, just a quick reminder, again, this will, for the folks that are here tonight, this will go back to the county commissioners on December 19th at 6 o'clock PM for a public hearing. So that'll be another option for them to come and speak if they would like to.
I hope you all heard that, okay? All right. Item number six there.
Sir, we can just give them a few minutes?
Yeah, I've got my minute.
I'm not a violent person. I'm only just punching it. I don't even get enough money to pay for the gas to come across town.
Off the record is unfortunate, sir, I said off the record is unfortunate that this is located where our community could certainly use an activity in a company like this.
As you place forth, and this isn't the place.
Fred, I didn't know you were in money under the table.
I have to pay for my vintage grand food.
Okay, Mr. Googie.
The next request we have is rezoning by American Materials Company. This request, it's a little bit different. Again, this is a sand mine. As you recall from last month, when you heard the sand mine down around Grifton, this is a use that used to be a conditional use permit and is now required to get a conditional zoning district established before it can operate rather than a conditional use permit. So it's the same process as what you're used to, but it's a little bit different than probably what you've heard before. So we'll go through this real quick, though. Our request, again, is by American Materials Company. It's to rezone 107.26 acres of property. It's owned by William Mitchum. There's five properties total involved. William D. Mitchum, NRNS LLC, and JK Properties of Pitt County. The NRNS and JK Properties are under the same ownership. They're just different LLC names. Parcel numbers 10812, 19208, 56789, 66597, and 84331. These are located off of Stokes Road, south of its intersection with Old River Road, and the request is, again, to go from rural agricultural to rural agricultural conditional district to allow the expansion of an existing sand mine. So again, not changing the zoning district so much, but establishing that conditional district for the sand mine. To give a little history on this site, it was originally approved by the board of county commissioners back in 2012 with a conditional use permit. American Materials received the permit to operate the sand mine. At that time, it was comprised of 235.74 acres. That's the permitted boundary, and that included 66.78 acres of excavation area. A portion of that has since been reclaimed, I believe, but a second permit was issued by the board in 2020 that added 50 acres to the permitted area with an additional 17.75 acres of excavation area. This rezoning will add those five parcels for 107 acres to that permitted area, but only 37 of that will actually be excavated. So approximately 70 or so acres will remain undisturbed and undeveloped. This also includes two acres that have been excavated that they thought were on their original, or on their last permit from 2020. They dug the area, but did not have it on the permit. It's included on their sand mining permit through the state, but it just wasn't approved locally. So they have included that on this request to bring that into compliance as well. We did do a site visit based off this request in October. It was determined that there had already been some excavation and some dirt. A good amount of dirt had been moved already prior to approval of the conditional use permit, and also prior to the issuance of their new mining permit by the state. And we have had conversations with the state. They're aware of it. Kind of just like us, this process is where necessary for them to come into compliance with them as well. So this is the property itself. It's on Stokes Road. It's just north of the river. It actually bounds the southwestern side of the properties, bound the river just to the east of Faulkland. This is the view of the site from Stokes Road. This is an existing path that leads to the back of the property that's also on there. This is also, if you're looking towards the northwest on Stokes Road, is if you're heading back towards the Bellevue intersection. This is looking back towards the southern end, as if you're heading kind of back towards Greenville and Old River Road in that direction. This is the view of the property to the east. It's pretty much just farmland, and there's also some existing manufactured homes that bound along the Stokes roadside. This is the site. As I mentioned, when we, subsequent to this request, when we went out and did our site visit, we saw that they had already started moving dirt. And again, this request would bring them into compliance with our regulations. This is just another area where they had cleared but had not started excavating yet. And this area that I mentioned that was, that they had dug, that was not included on their last conditional use permit, was part of their mining permit, but was not approved through our process. And I'll kind of show you a little bit more detail on that in a second. This is on 222. This is their office and their access, so this is where the trucks will be coming out. So they won't be coming out on the Stokes roadside. They come out through the 222 side of the property. So these are the five properties in total. You see the area is designated as ag, open natural resource. That's intended for agriculture, forestry, That's intended for agriculture, forestry, recreational uses, open space, resource conservation, or critical natural areas, and very limited low-density residential uses. And most of this area is within the one hundred year floodplain. Existing land use, see, it's primarily just undeveloped land currently. You see, there's some, some residential uses along Stokes Road. And then to the north is the existing sand mine. I'll kind of point out with the cursor if I can. The area that was originally approved in 2012 was this area here. In 2020, they expanded this pond you see here onto this property, which is the Mitchum property. And then the area that they've dug out is also over here as well, which I'll kind of highlight on the, on the site plan. But this is, these are all the, the new area that they're adding to the permit, which, which is the bulk of, of the request. Pitt County zoning, see, it's rural agricultural, there's some RR across the street. And then on the other side of the river is RR forty, low-density residential district. And then also you see the town of Faulkland is to the west of the site. Again, RA, they're not changing that zoning, so it's not like the Sora situation where they're going from a residential district to commercial. They're keeping that RA district and just establishing that conditional zoning district, which allows for that specific use with reasonable conditions. Sand mining does have several development standards. There has to be a minimum one hundred foot separation from the edge of any pit to the permit boundary of the mine. If there's blasting involved, which generally there isn't with a sand mine, there's hours of operation that are enforced. But again, sand mines usually just have an excavator and some, some dump trucks, they're not doing any blasting. That provides screening and must obtain a valid state-issued mining permit. So this is the site plan. You see, the area pretty much in gray is, pretty much that entire area there was, was approved through two conditional use permits in 2012 and 2020. The area we're talking about tonight is that sort of bubble in the middle or towards the, the far end of it. Also, you see at the end where this match line is, there used to be some, some buffers that they were maintaining there. Those have to be, those, they're going to excavate those so that they just flow right into the ponds and the, the pit on the, the new portion. So this is the proposed additional mining area. They proposed excavation area and the buffers. And just to give you an idea, the scale's kind of hard to discern from, from this size. But from the edge of the pit, pretty much to this corner, the property line's about three hundred and twenty-five feet. And then closer to about a thousand feet from the nearest residences along Stokes Road. And then the remainder of the property is going, going to remain undisturbed in wooded and wetlands. So staff does find that the request is consistent with the land use plan. It's designated as agriculture, open natural resource, and is an expansion of the existing sand mine. In addition, there's a significant amount of wooded and wetland areas that'll provide that spatial separation and screening between the site and the adjacent residential land uses. I also find that the request is reasonable in the public interest because, again, it will retain those wooded and wetland areas for the, the screening and to provide that spatial separation. And also, the mine doesn't access the Stokes roadside, it comes off two twenty-two. So it won't increase the amount of truck traffic on Stokes Road around those residences. So staff does recommend the approval of the request, subject to the requirements of the zoning warrants. And we also do recommend a few additional conditions. They'll need to provide a fifty-foot repair and buffer on all stream features that are present on the site or provide documentation showing that those features are exempt from the Tarpan Buffalo, Tarpanico buffer regulations. They'd also need to obtain a flood development permit from our office. And they'll need to comply with any requirements for access to the subject property. Mr. Chair, we'd like to entertain public comments now. The board will make a recommendation to the commissioners. And they're also scheduled to hold a public hearing on December nineteenth at six PM.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
At this time, we will open our meeting for public comments. And I do believe we have some folks signed up to make a comment. Levita Wetherington?
I came, Levita Wetherington, I own the property at twenty-six fourteen Stokes Road, and it's been in my family for about thirty years. My concern coming to the meeting, I wanted information. But I'm also concerned about all of the families that live on Stokes Road because we all survived Floyd in a very different way. The water came all the way up to the kitchen cabinets in my mobile home. And then we came back strong. We all put our trailers back, our manufacturer homes back up there. And these homes mean a lot to these people. And there's a few of them here tonight. And they've worked hard for their homes. And they deserve to have that protected from flooding. When Matthew came along, it still took me several weeks before I could even get to my property because water surrounded it. My concern with this approval would be if it's going to increase the potential for flooding on our properties. I've just invested and put a new roof, put a brand-new air conditioning system in my manufactured home. My niece is living there right now. I would really hate to see her flooded out. So I ask for your consideration in terms of the floodplain. Pitt County, as a county, owns part of that property because you bought it through the reclaiming process. But my property did not qualify per se because I wasn't living in it personally. My children have lived in it, my niece is living in it now. I don't want it flooding, so that's my concern.
Ms. Justina Ortega. Justina Ortega? Could you please come to the mic, please? Share with us your name and address, please. Pull that mic down in front of you. Please. There you go.
My name, Justina Ortega, I live in the two twenty-six fifty-seven Stokes Road.
Can she talk Spanish?
Okay.
Does she feel the same way, what? The lady spoke about the, you know, the flooding and all that. She said she agrees to everything that she was saying. Yeah, she said, like, when it rains, rains a lot, that she does get a little bit of water up. She said, so if that goes on, it's going to get worse for her, where she stays at. Yeah. Yeah, she just don't want it to flood no more. She got her kids living with her, you know, she does have several animals around too. And she's just worried about all that, so she, she doesn't want any of that happening, whatever's going on. The flooding part itself. Yeah, to, I guess, make a good decision and see what goes on. Again, whatever you guys decide and see what, what you guys think.
Okay.
About everything that's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Leonard?
I'm Kathy Leonard, and I live on two six two one Stokes Road. And I'm in agreement with these other two ladies. But my concern is, what is it going to do to the value of our property on Stokes Road? I've lived in my property about twenty years now, and I just about have it paid off. So when I do plan on selling it, is it going to decrease in value? I read where it decreases approximately thirty percent. So that's one of my major concerns. And also, I live real close to a wildlife preservatory, and there's a lot of wildlife behind our homes. It was nothing but swamp lands and forest, and that's going to be destroyed. And the wildlife will be destroyed also with it, and there is a lot. So I thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Eric, if you would, I'm going to ask, I'll close this session for public comments.
Our committee chair, the, Mr. James Ezell with American Materials is also here tonight to speak.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm James Ezell. I live at three ten Tiffany Circle in Garner, North Carolina. I am a consultant to American Materials. I do their permitting and mine planning. I drew up the plans for this site at their request. And the main reason I'm here is to answer any questions that, that y'all may have. I know there's been concerns brought up about the flooding and, you know, that, obviously, the sand mine doesn't want flooding either. The county has a, has a good method of studying the impacts of those operations before they're enacted. And we are going through that process now with the, the federal floodway study and that sort of thing. And that's, that's certainly taken into consideration. And the state is also requiring that before they approve the mining permit modification. But if you have any other questions about the, the technical aspects of it, I'd be glad to, to try to answer those.
Any questions from the board?
Has there been any studies done how the impact of a sand mine, this close to the river and the wetland areas, how does it, does it alter the runoff so that the flooding, if, when it does occur? Does it just shift it to another location, or does it still participate in the flooding?
It's my understanding that the floodway studies that are done for any development in that floodway addresses those. The, the main things that the floodway studies are elevated areas. In other words, if you're building up an area in higher elevation, then when a flood comes through, it diverts that and it, it raises the floodwaters in certain areas. This being an excavation as a whole, it has the opposite effect. It does not cause, it would not cause the water to, to rise in any way. It would actually cause it to lower because it's a hole in the ground. But like I said, there's, there are experts that do that more than I. And I think the county has already received part of that information, or maybe all of it, for the, for the floodway study.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question of Eric. To, to the best of your knowledge, the flooding that has occurred in the past, is that a function of the river flooding? In other words, what I'm saying is, is it a net, is it an inevitable flooding that occurred? Or is it caused by the sand mine? I mean, I don't see how it could be caused by the sand mine.
I would say it's just, it's, it's a low area, and it's susceptible to significant flooding. We saw that back in Floyd, which was before the sand mine was even in place.
Right.
That's the reason why the county does own several properties out there.
Right.
The county owns about fifty, sixty acres or so directly to the south of this property. It's sort of a boundary to the south. But yeah, I think it's, I think it's just more a function of the river itself. Again, it's just a, it's a, it's a low swampy, flood-prone area. And as, as Mr. Ezell said, typically, from a floodplain administration standpoint, the, the sand mines, like he said, they're holes. And they're viewed more as a catch basin than they are causing the river to, or causing the water to increase.
Right.
And he said, as he mentioned, they are, they do have, I think they do have a no-ride study on, on file currently for the floodway area, which basically says they will not, they cannot increase the amount of flooding by one foot in the area or by more than one foot. So they're going through that, and they also have wetland delineations, I think, on file as well. So, so yeah, but I, I think for the flooding, it is just a, it's more just a function of the land itself as opposed to the sand mine.
And one would think that hole would take some of the water and give some relief to a degree anyway. That's why we're asking. Yes, ma'am.
Just to give you a bit more of the information, I neglected to mention it a while ago. Behind my property, I'm across the road from where they're proposing the landmine. But all of those houses along that strip, on the back end of our property, is a canal that's so deep that I would be, I'd be drowning in it. And the water backs up into there. So that's why we're concerned about the flooding, because if it pushes the water up, it comes in that canal and it's going to come on, on the property. So if you look at the map, behind all of those houses there on that line, there's a big, deep canal. It's not a ditch, it's a canal.
So noted. Eric, I would ask you one more question, something that I heard just at the end. There was a concern about wildlife and some of the wood land. But I thought I read earlier, that's not going to be anything, nothing's going to be done with that wood land.
Well, they're, they're going to clear the area that they're excavating.
Yeah, right.
And, yeah, the buffer area around it will, will remain undisturbed. And there's, like I said, there's approximately seventy acres that they're showing on the site plan that will remain undisturbed.
That's the part that I read, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other comments from the board?
I got, I kind of got confused when this, when he first proposed this, that no traffic would come out on Stokes Road. And then the first two ladies that got up and talked about flooding. And I would think that a sand mine would be a big hole. Water would not come into that flood. I just got confused there for a minute there.
And I think that goes back and answers some of the question that you were asking just a moment ago. If the sand mine would help cause that. But no, I think that's just an act of God that we've experienced and has come at us.
You would think that it might help it.
Oh, that's what I'm thinking. Any other comments? Eric, anything else on your mind?
No, sir.
At this time, the chair will entertain a motion whether to deny or to approve this request.
Not everybody at once.
Silence.
I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve this request.
Motion by Mr. Austin to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Book, okay? All, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by the raising of the right hand. All opposed, like sign.
Mr. Chairman, who was the second?
This book.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Rhodes, for Planning Matters, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're following up from the board's directive at last month's meeting where you had some interest in possibility of some amendments to our regulations, especially the subdivision regulations. With that, tonight, what we've done, we've started compiling information from other counties about soil suitability test and when that information's brought forward for consideration by their planning boards. But also, we've gone back and looked at our regulations. And our subdivision regulations, as you've seen in your package, have been in place right eight, right at fifty years. And we've been, through the years, continually adjusting those regulations to address concerns and other development changes that have occurred here. And quickly, I'll just go through a few things. First, those amendments, run through those quickly. We have Angie Manning here that's agreed to come to talk with you, give you an idea about septic system permitting as far as the state regulations and how things are handled here in Pitt County. And ultimately, we'd like your consideration of forming a committee to look at these subdivision ordinance changes over the next coming few months. So with that, a few things about our amended ordinance. It's, again, been put in place for over fifty years. And remember, our regulations are based off state statutes. We can only... We can only, in these, in this line, we can only do what the state allows us to do. State actually provides to us the definition of a subdivision, and that's been brought forward in our current regulations. But just to give you an idea of how we've changed things through the years, streets have often been an item of concern. Certainly, we want to make sure the streets are kept up to date and that they're maintained for a significant portion of time, either by the North Carolina Department of Transportation or if they're private, by the homeowners association. Talk a little bit more about how we got involved further with that. Our big changes really came in 91, and some of the details that we have in our current regulations, especially the processes and procedures, were established about 30 years ago. Still hold true with our preliminary plaits, then construction plans, then final plaits. And who's reviewing those, whether it comes to the planning board or handle the staff functions. There've been several other things, even back to 2001, when we first brought in language to our subdivision regulations about off-site septic systems. You know, it's one thing when we always dealt with the septic systems that were on each individual lots. When they started being proposed off-site, we worked hand-in-hand with the environmental health to get new regulations in place as to the easement areas, how they connect to the lots, who's responsible for maintaining those areas and so forth. Also, further after that, about 20 years ago, when we brought on countywide zoning, it was necessary to make some changes, take out the minimum lot sizes and other things that were in our subdivision ordinance that were more appropriately handled through the zoning ordinance. 2006, additional changes to the off-site septic system areas and how those force mains that connect to the septic system or septic tank and then to the actual septic fields, how they were supposed to be connected and the width of the easements. Mentioned road maintenance earlier. Back about 10 years ago, we got hot and heavy. We had a blue ribbon task force of sorts set up here with planning board members and other members from our community, developers, had a commissioner sit on that board, and really came up with, I think, some, is a model now for a lot of communities. They've looked at our regulations to see how we're handling, ensuring that DOT streets end up being maintained by DOT. So those public road rights of way, how are those handled? We do an annual assessment to ensure that roads that are publicly dedicated are maintained until the time that DOT is petitioned to take those over. We also thought we had a pretty good mechanism in place to even ensure the performance of those roads. At that point in time, the state legislature, or legislation allowed for those performance guarantees. About two years after they were put in place, that legislation was changed. We had to in turn change our regulations to take it out. So some of those other management or inspection ideas came more apparent at that point in the need of making sure that we kept those roads maintained. Other things, been some changes, of course, with special purpose lots back in, earlier this year, where we talked about those off-site septic systems again. They continue to change. You'll hear more of that from Angie. And our regulations in turn had to change. And we had some really bad examples that this board had concerns about that we felt like needed to change in our subdivision regulations. So with that, that's kind of a preview and a lot of the information we talked about, roads as well as the septic systems. And of course, any time that the state legislation changed, like last year with 160D, we had to do a complete overhaul of certain sections. But tonight, we wanted to focus on soil suitability. We have Angie here, but I see a question first.
I just have a simple question, Mr. Chairman. Can I ask him a simple question?
Sure.
Okay. When the law was changed by the legislature in 2015, they basically put it on either the DOT or the homeowners association, but it'll never belong to the developer through performance guarantees because they did away with that process, right? In other words, you can't bond the road through the developer anymore. The legislature said you can't do that. And that was an attempt to give the developer a free ride, wasn't it?
Well, it didn't allow the local governments to hold any money. I won't say it gives them a free ride because they sign off. They are responsible. Those developers are responsible for maintenance of the road if it's publicly dedicated until the time DOT takes the roads over for maintenance.
Provided they're not bankrupt.
And a few caveats, yes. Yes.
Okay, I understand. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. So to clarify, they're still civilly liable?
They are. Yes. And that's where Jason in our office annually does a full inspection of every development site that has those proposed public streets and makes sure that they're being maintained. And as a friendly reminder, if it meets certain criteria that DOT could accept them for maintenance, we give a friendly reminder to the developer, it's time to petition DOT to do just that. No need for them to hold on to the roads, the developers, when they're ready for maintenance by DOT. Switching gears again, going back to soil suitability, we have Angie here tonight with our environmental health department, and she's gonna come in and give you the latest on how things are managed here.
Thank you. Hello, how are y'all? All right, so I'm Angie, well Angela Manning. I'm the environmental health director with Pitt County Environmental Health. We'll give y'all a brief overview of a fairly complex issue. So I'm gonna give you a 10 to 15-minute presentation, or we could be here for six, eight hours, your choice, whichever, whichever one you want to do. I just wanted to tell you kind of a little bit about environmental health and who we are. We get lost kind of in development a little bit because we are so far in front of the development process. But environmental health is a division of public health. We have five main divisions of an environmental health. Septic and wells is what I'm here for tonight. But I have five main sections under my supervision. Septic and wells, food and lodging, children's environmental health, swimming pools and tattoos, and vector control. Just to let you know, Septic and wells, we complete about 10,000 regulatory activities a year. 1,500 of those being septic design permits. The other environmental health sections complete over 13,000 regulatory activities a year. We only have 20 staff members. Septic and wells currently has seven positions in that. Two of those are currently vacant. So we have a large workload for a very limited staff number. So safe sewage disposal is public health. Okay, so this is kind of public health 101, and we've come a long way. These are pictures in Pitt County. But we, the past being typically, you know, that house privy to the present, which is typically the modern-day septic system that you see in your own backyard today. So how septic permitting has changed at the local level? Historically, septic permits have always been done by the local health departments. You know, Mr. Rhodes, James just presented to you 20 years of the subdivision, and through that subdivision, he referenced how he worked with environmental health throughout that whole process. Well, that is drastically changing. Market pressures and new legislative actions have introduced multiple new ways that septic permits can be issued. Developers, builders, and local citizens now have options other than the local health department for their septic permitting. These options give the consultants to submit their work to the local environmental health office as a checklist approval process only. So we truly are just paper peepers and not necessarily the ones designing and writing the septic permits. They're no longer our permit. We're gonna run through some of these legislative actions today, and some of these get really deep in the weeds and complex. So we're just gonna kind of do a brief overview. The very first one to kind of hit the books back in 2015 was the engineered permit option. This came, became effective November 1st of 2016. But this was the very first one. This allowed an engineer within conjunction of a licensed soil scientist to submit a packet for their own septic permit. Basically, they submit a packet. It is on a common form. And they submit it to us as a checklist. And this is literally, we are checking the boxes, there are certain required items, and we are literally only allowed by the general statute and the legislative action to make sure that what they say is in the packet is in the packet, and it is a mandated 15-day turnaround. This initially legislatively was designed for those large systems that are over 3,000 gallons a day, more for commercial use, that had to go through state review. State review could take anywhere from 30 days to six months, because there's only three engineers at the state level. So this was initially the thought process, I've been told, for this private permitting option. However, this really took off for the residential use. The caveat to this is the local health department and county do not carry any liability with the septic system should any fail. Any malfunction concerns or questions about the system has to go to the consultant. So if we have an engineered option permit, whether it be commercial or residential, and let's say you end up buying that property, you have a question about it, literally I have to send you back to the engineer at any point for even a simple question about that packet. So this is just a screenshot of kind of the form. It is a common form developed by the state of North Carolina. It is not anything that Pitt County developed. And it is simply a form that they fill out and they submit the required information to us. And this is actually kind of a screenshot of the section. You can see there's a box for, at the top, if you can see, if I move my mouse, you can see it, literally it is a completeness review. Okay, that is all we are doing, is just making sure that the packet is complete. And you notice that we just check a box, being incomplete or complete, and then there's signature lines for us. And that is all that we are allowed to do by general statute. So then, after that, we had to have another private option permitting, and we don't make the names, but it is the COVID-19 permitting option. So this came about in session law 202097. This law became effective under Governor Cooper's declaration of emergency during COVID-19. This allows a licensed soil scientist to submit a septic design based on his septic evaluation and design. The packet is submitted to the local health department, again, as a checklist. This acts very, it mimics the EAP option, the engineer permit option that we just saw, except for it doesn't require the engineer. The local health department, again, is only by session law allowed to review the items listed on the checklist. The check is a checklist review. However, we are now required to turn those around in five days mandated by law. So again, our timeline has shrunk there. The local health department and county, again, do not carry any liability with these septic systems should they fail. Any malfunctions or concerns, again, we're sending that citizen or that builder to their consultant for those. This session law was recently replaced, and this permitting option is sunsetting January 1st of 2023. This is still a current valid permitting option and still available for use and is still being used. These permits, however, do not carry any expiration date due to not being addressed in the legislative action. Currently, our standard permit is valid for five years. So these permits that are issued are issued indefinitely. So there is no expiration date because it was not addressed in the legislation. Okay, so this is our new, one of our newest ones. This came about this year. It was actually, to make a long story short, it made a previous session law actually effective this year that was kind of sitting dormant. So this session law, 202211, became effective July of this year, the week of July 4th. We all went on vacation, had the day off for July 4th, then we came back and got hit with this. This requires an additional certification for licensed soil scientists. So I have to say our consultants are actually really good. And so this, this private permit option requires the licensed soil scientist actually to get an additional certification to be able to do this. So not all licensed soil scientists are choosing to get this additional certification, but it does require additional certifications. Again, this is an additional type of private option permit that the licensed soil scientists themselves can do. It is basically a checklist certification for us, and it is a mandated 10-day turnaround. Again, the county does not carry any liability to the system. And again, any questions, concerns, or problems malfunction with the system, they have to go back to the consultants for that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
So in saying what I'm seeing and reading?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just curious, there's a track record somewhere that shows how many septic systems may have failed.
There is.
In a time period.
There is. So we send monthly data to the state. So every month, I collect numbers. I can tell you how many of these we've signed off on and everything like that. And we send them up to the state. And the state, so graciously, is only two years behind in actually calculating that data and providing it to us on a statewide report. So I can tell you with, I could probably hand dig, I don't have an automated way to find out what type of failures. Most of the failures that I'm seeing on our monthly reports are failures of traditional systems that have been local health department systems that are over 15 to 20 years old. So typically, most of these permits are too new, are so new, unless it has been physically damaged after installation.
None of these that have required you to have a five-day or 10-day turnaround, we've got no record that they're actually failing.
Not yet, because again, these are, these are so new. We're talking about legislative action that's within the last two to three years, and so the systems are going in so fast, so.
I guess where I'm going with this, that at some point in time, since the county or the environmental health has no liability, there should be somewhere in that checklist to make sure we are checking all the boxes, to make sure that a owner, an owner, an owner does not have an issue down the road, as much as we can.
As much as we, as much as we can. And I mean, now, I can tell you the other, have I heard other counties particularly say that engineered permit option has been around since 2016? Have there been documented failures across the state of North Carolina of engineered option permits? Absolutely. Do we have the number of engineered option permits that other counties have? Nowhere near. I mean, there are other counties that have had subdivisions just flat out are engineered option. The developer chooses to do EAP option permits, and so they have subdivision after subdivision after subdivision of engineered option permits that could give you examples of failures and failure rates that we don't experience.
Yes, and I appreciate that information. And I'm concerned about what's happening in the state, more specifically, Pitt County.
Absolutely, because it puts the homeowner, while we have some really great consultants that we all want to do the great thing, it does kind of put the homeowner in a situation where they may not realize they have an engineered option permit. You know, we get over, we provide over 100 requests for septic permits from real estate transactions a month. So when one particularly is a private option permit, if the realtor has questions or anything like that, you know, we forward and say, you need to talk to the consultant. And some of them get concerned because they don't necessarily get the typical one-page septic permit like we get. And that's not a bad thing, it's just, it's an option. It's an option. So the other option, and the last option for private option permitting in the state of North Carolina, is it's commonly known as the AT permit, because just saying general statute 130A335A2 is a little cumbersome every time you're talking about this. This is a complex hybrid piece of legislation. But basically, to break it down, it mandates that the local environmental health office shall issue a permit, an improvement permit, on the soil work, on the soil evaluation of the licensed soil scientist. So basically, an applicant can present this option of private permitting, and we, as the local health department, my environmental health specialist, is required to write an improvement permit based on someone else's soil evaluation, not their own. And so we have 10 days to complete this option of private permitting. And they can actually mix and match this. So we can, they can apply for this type of private permit just to receive the improvement permit for the initial evaluations, and then we can continue through our process for the construction authorizations all the way to the end. Or they can do one of the other options midway through the permitting process. So this, this particular private option permit gives the applicant the option of working with the consultants at any point during the evaluation and design process. So this one has been a little harder to implement in the workflow, because it's not as straightforward as kind of, once we sign off on it, it's done, it's out of our hands. This one kind of stays around and we, it's our permit on someone else's work, and then we have to carry it through the process. So how So how does that impact septic permitting in Pitt County? So developers and builders and citizens may choose alternatives or our traditional methods. So we're not the only game in town anymore. And this is great, you know, when, when you're, when you're having staffing issues and you have a four to six month wait time before you can get to new lots because you have 120 applications waiting, you know, this gives the developers and the builders the option to go the private route. How many private people are there? There's not very many. There's not very many people that do this work. So we, you know, we all experience those wait times and those backlogs. These new private permit options have caused workflow and process issues with our inter-agency cooperation. You know, we as environmental health work really, really well with other agencies. We have great relationships and we work in hand in hand with building inspections, planning and zoning and a lot of other inter-agency departments. Tradition and environmental health comments, for example, on subdivision mapping. Now, we may not be the agent or agency for the comments. If it is a private consultant or an engineer, then they need to make the comments for the soil evaluations or what type of comments that maybe need to be made for the subdivision map if they're not going to use the local environmental health office. We may not be involved in any major role in the septic evaluation or design for private lots or even major subdivisions. Some of those private option permits are, you know, cut us out totally. So again, it's just a checklist for us. So we're signing off on that checklist is complete. We have no say in the evaluation or the septic design. So the current process with major subdivisions, so talking about your subdivision ordinances, developers and builders may give us a courtesy notice that they'll be submitting through our office to kind of get an update on timelines for if they're going to submit a 30 lot subdivision, approximately how long of a wait time they may experience before we can go out to do their evaluation. There are times when we're asked to comment on a preliminary map where they have not necessarily made contact or even applied through our office yet. Again, now they have multiple options for private permitting and they may never come through our office at that preliminary plat stage because they may not be using environmental health to evaluate those lots. After the preliminary plat approval is when applications for either environmental health to evaluate or the builder or developer is going to have to make clear whether they're going to use a private option permit for submission. The submission on the preliminary plat is just that it's a preliminary. Oftentimes, what you see on the proposal for the septic design, septic by the designer is not where or what they actually are issued. Some of the preliminary plats, they are very, very beautifully straight lines. You see those great squares for those, you know, geometric septic systems only if it were true. So this is more in line, kind of what you end up actually seeing for when a septic system actually gets designed. So you can see our septic systems are always going to be on contours. So rarely are they over those perfectly square boxes that line up, you know, perfectly with the lot lines. They're always going to be in the best soil. So for example, you know, they could have two square boxes down here at the bottom of that proposed lot, but if we don't agree and we find that there's better soil somewhere else on the lot, then we're going to go with that better soil call, even though the designer may have put the proposed septic area somewhere else on the lot. One thing to think about is when you see on preliminary plats, a lot of times you see just a square. That is not the reality that we deal with. That's, that square is never going to be built. How many times have you ever seen that square house? What you see on the left is more of what we deal with. And so that's when we start having to work around the driveways, the back porches, the screen porches and everything like that. And so that's where the soil evaluation is one part, but the actual septic design and the type of septic system that can fit in all the factors to make it work are really two separate things. So this is a perfect example. So for example, you may see right here on the right, there is the proposal, you've got the proposed homesite. You may see this very similar on a preliminary plat and a designer might have a system that is two proposed mound systems. Okay? So you see here, very little square footage left on this lot for anything. You see a perfectly rectangle house. You do not see a driveway. You see no barns. You see no future swimming pool. You know, where's the jungle gym for the children going to go? Over here on the lot to the left, you see something very different. You see a lot that has riparian buffer. It's got a wooded area. There's potential electrical easements. There could be DOT easements. So the square footage of usable area for the lot is taken up and then you can already see that the builder, we've already got a proposed house with a pretty good house plan and house shape. So even though we might have, let's say we've got wonderful grade A soil here, we've got really 13 to 19 inch soil wetness conditions here that's mound criteria, they both could very well end up with a drip system, which is a very expensive system, but we both have the same problems, limited space. We know that this home is not going to be built like this. Most likely, we're going to end up with something that looks like this that we're going to now have to make fit. So while the preliminary plat may, may initially, the designer may propose something like this, what they actually end up with once the builder gets involved, the actual septic system that the builder chooses with the house plan that ends up on the lot may change at any point during, during the design. So the past, so typically, we always, the conventional concrete tank gravel trench system, God love them, they were the best. You can hardly damage them. They last forever and you know, they last 20, 25 years. So that is typically the past. This is the present. This is what you're seeing. You're seeing a lot of the polystyrene. You're seeing some large diameter pipe. You're seeing these low profile chambers. Low profile chambers have changed the game. You, we've been able to eliminate a lot of mound systems with the invention and the use of the low profile chamber. Even have plastic septic tanks now. So when you, when you're in the situation that you're in a subdivision already, you can't get a tank truck through the, in between the houses, in between to get a tank back there. We can use a plastic tank and now you've got pre-treated, pre-treatment and drip systems that are not necessarily the cost that they were even 10 years ago. So these are septic systems that you're going to see, these are 90% of what we see in today. Okay? So these are the chamber systems and these are the easy flow systems. These are probably 75% of the type of systems that you see installed by installers today. Number one, they are very easy to install as far as labor is concerned. You're not bringing in large trucks of gravel. That's why you don't see rock systems anymore. And both of these systems get 25% reduction. So you get a reduction in the space that's needed for your septic areas on the lot, which means you have bigger areas for the house or reduced lot size. Low profile chamber, we talked about there. So the low profile chamber is only eight inches high. This actually helps in reduction of the mound system so that the mound actually can now, what would have typically been a fill system that goes above the ground is now an at-grade system. And then also drip systems. One reason why developers do not necessarily and builders don't want mound systems is the raw material cost. The cost of sand to haul in the sand and the dirt to build the mound is astronomical right now. You can get an innovative drip system for the same price that you can a mound system and a drip system is going to be an at-grade system. So aesthetically, it's going to be much more pleasing. So challenges that face septic permitting at the local level, the unknown legislative actions. So we get about two to three bills proposed in the legislature a year and so how that impacts our program is kind of the unknown. New septic products and technologies come to the market faster than the rules and regulations can change. You know, it's just the nature of the beast. We haven't had an update to our septic rules since 2001. They've been working on an update for, let's say, I've been 18 years in my career now for 18 years for the septic rules. It's gone for the rule rewrite committee, the rules, uh, rule rewrite legislative body now three times and it's been shot down with rules, letters of objection. So it's going to go back with, in December supposedly. So we'll see what happens there. Legislative actions not only impact our direct division, but also impact our cooperative partners in the development process. Suddenly, a new private option permit comes in that changes the way our workflow does, then planning and zoning has to adopt and change how they particularly impacts their process as well. Complex permitting processes are harder for the public to understand and sometimes get caught up in. We have had people buy property that started out with a private permit option. They end up building the house. They're ready to close and to come to find out, they've got a, they've got to bring the closing package on the, the private permit end. And so they've got to bring all the consultants back together. They weren't aware. It's hard to get people on the phone and it's hard to explain that to them. They're, they're like, well, I've got to close in three days. You know, what do I do? And I'm like, I'm so sorry, go back to your consultant. You know, and, you know, you can put pressure on us and you, they can call me and say, hey, your employee's not answering the phone and I can go down the hallway and I can make somebody make a phone call or answer the phone. Private industry doesn't work necessarily like that. So the other thing is private consultants are extremely busy when there's not that many of them and they've got, now they're charged with installation, the inspection and some of these permitting processes. So they're actually just as busy as we are now, which is a change for them. Staffing shortages remain a challenge with competition from being, from competing private sectors and other biotech industries. You know, we, we've got the same recruiting issues that other industries do as well. So we're recruiting far too vacant positions now. And so, and it's about a nine month to a 12 month training process to, to be able to do right septic permits for environmental health. So, so with that, that is the end of my presentation. Yes, sir.
Ready for the questions?
Oh my, okay.
Just in a general terms, how many soil scientist based permits does this Pitt County run into?
So out of, out of the about 123 a month, they account for roughly, I would say, about less than 10%. So again, a permia is different phases of, so that 10% is different phases of permitting. So it is not, it is not a large percentage of our new applications that come in.
What is, the answers to this question may be obvious, but I just wanted to hear from you. What is the actual incentive for engineered design systems versus the public process?
The incentive for commercial engineered design systems is huge. So to go through the state, to go through state review at the regulatory end is massively complicated. It is a very drawn out process. So from the commercial industrial side, I can see that engineered option permitting is a great option. If you, because here's the thing, the state, the state rules already require if you're over 300,000 gallons a day, if it's an industrial use, if you're already meeting certain criteria, you've got to pay for an engineer to design your system anyway. So you're already having to pay for that engineer. Then you submit it to me and then I submit it to the state and then you wait an unknown timeframe for the state engineer to review engineered work. So I do think there is an absolute place for these private permitting options. So I think the engineer option permit for a commercial project is an absolute game changer and I do think it, it does help the commercial sector a lot. Where I think the unintended consequence for the EAP was on the residential side, those 360 gallon per day homes, because it really, it, it took off when you've got backlogs at the local level and you know, you've got engineers that can work with licensed soil scientists that can turn around these, these EAPs and a developer can get a private permit or 30 of them in an expedited timeframe. Whereas, you know, I've got one person that can do subdivisions. So that, there is certainly, you know, a benefit to them. But from the commercial side, absolutely can see the benefit to the engineer option permit. Absolutely.
It makes great sense. The required turnaround times that when permits are put in your charge, does, does this really require any level of expertise or does it really invalidate the public health education?
You mean from the public health expertise from the consultant side or from our side?
Your side.
Okay, so no, they have taken that, they have taken that away. So it is literally a checklist. So if, if, if it says on those five things, your car insurance, your license plate, the make and model and the color of your car, then that, those are legislatively the only five things that I can look at. The significance, however, is, is that I can still inform the client, here's your private option permit. And, and these scenarios happen on a regular basis to us. You're still going to have hurdles in the process. You're still going to have to provide a wetland delineation. You're still going to have to provide a surveyed map through planning and zoning. So even though we're not providing the permit, we're still providing a service to the client. But yes, we do, yes, to answer your question, they have taken that out of that. It is just a checklist.
I've got a question.
Yes.
Angie, does, does a soil scientist have to maintain liability insurance?
Yes, so in, in that checklist, they do have to maintain liability insurance and they do have to submit a certificate of liability insurance with that packet. Yes, for everyone.
And as a regulatory matter, they answer to whom?
They have their own board. So the licensed soil scientists are governed by their own licensing board and so they are to answer to their board. And same thing for the engineers for the engineered option permit.
Do you think that the recent changes have caused them to, to be authorized to do things that they probably ought not to be authorized to do?
I think, I think working with the locals licensed soil scientists that we have here, because we work with them very, very closely, hand to hand, probably talk to them multiple times during the day. It has opened their eyes to the struggles that we have on the local level. For example, typically before any of these private option permitting where they actually were writing the permits, they mainly did the large land development. Okay, they would do the land development for the subdivision work, the pre-work and everything, then they would hand it over to the local level. Now that they're writing the permits, the small things, the changes, I don't want my house here. I want to move it 100 feet back on the lot. Well, guess what? Now they have to contact the licensed soil scientist. The licensed soil scientist has to go out, make the change. Now, albeit there is a fee for that, fee for service and hopefully they're being compensated well for their time to do that. Whereas for our $400, we went out and did however many times it took to get it right. If, for example, let's say the builder doesn't build the house in the correct location, happens a lot and it impacts the septic system. Well, guess what? Now he's got to go, he's got to void his, his packet, he's got to rewrite a packet. So they're experiencing the nuances of the work that we experienced on the local level that they didn't have before. So they're experiencing the errors of installation because now they're inspecting their own work. So when a septic installer installs too deep, doesn't install correctly, there's an, you know, errors and malfunctions, you know, installation, they've now got to deal with that whereas we've got to deal with that. And to their benefit, they're one person for their whole office where I have a team of seven. So I can get an inspector out there if there's a problem at installation, I can get a supervisor, I can get that person aid and support. It might be a one man show. So I would say with our local, with our, you know, we work well with them and no, I think every single one of them is doing the best that they can with the information that they have. I think that they realize the struggles that we face on the local level and so there's a lot of things and they've offered some really good recommendations for changes. But I, I think everybody has the common goal to make good work because they don't want to be blamed for anything. Because now with them inspecting their own work, there is no, a lot of them like the checks and balances. And with them, they're, right now, there, there's not if they, it's all on them.
Angie, I, I built my house 56 years ago. So you, if you've got any history, you know what it took to get a permit. You dig a hole in the ground, set a bucket of water there, the inspector comes pour the water in there and he watches it like, and my, and I got my permit and my system lasted for probably 35 or 37 years.
I'm telling you, those gravel, those gravel systems are great.
And how I found out, I thought, I called the health department to get them to come out there to, I wanted to extend, I put another line in and he was real nice. He said, I'm going to condemn your system. I said, that ain't what I called you out here for.
Well, yeah, that old adage, we're here from the government, we're here to help you. you.
But I'm glad I did. It costs a lot of money, but they put in a system of the big plastic pipes that run, I think, 50 feet out in your, and it works great. Things have really changed. If back in the old days, you wouldn't have to have two or three people.
Yeah.
Instead of seven, would you work?
Well, and, and that's the thing, you know, in trying to recruit for this job, you know, unfortunately, the job description is, yes, we, you have to have, you know, your college degree, you have to get board certified. So we take state boards, just like your lawyers, your doctors, your other licensed professionals. We keep up our licensed professionals. But every day you're going to dig holes four feet deep, multiple times on a lot. And we're going to ask you to rinse and repeat multiple times, rain, shine, you know. So it's, it's laborsome work. And, and truly, you know, being in the development side of it, you know, everybody wants permits just as fast as they can. And, and the balance is trying to provide a good, efficient process with the quality and the checks and balances there. And, and that's, that's the balance that we, we have to, you know. And, and there is a place for private option permitting. You know, I'm, I'm not opposed to the private option permitting and giving citizens an option. Because, you know, when we got down to two inspectors, there's nothing we can do, literally. And you're trying to hire and you're trying to hire and you're trying to hire. But government doesn't necessarily move at the speed of what the market and industry need. So there's options out there.
I would just say, a recent personal experience, I had a, we had family land subdivided, but it was in an LLC, so we couldn't do the exemption stuff. And my incentive for using the soil scientist was the speed. I think you were very sure at that time. But we did that last option you did where his work was reviewed by your internal.
Yep.
And it was explained to me that if something happens in the future, I don't have to go find Scott to fix it.
You do not for that.
Right.
So on that, depending, on that one, depending on the improvement permit and construction authorization process, no.
Right. And that was just to get the land subdivided. But it sounded like those other options you were mentioning open up a lot of risk to homeowners that may be buying. I mean, I think you said that, but it sounds like there is a lot of risk. And the reason we went through the last one wasn't that I had to go back through the soil scientist, was the soil scientist told me if I die or decide not to do this anymore, because he was behind, right?
Yeah. And they're very honest about their wait times and their workload and everything else. Yeah.
Yeah. So, so it seems like there's a lot of opportunity for risk.
So, your septic system was approved by the scientist, soil scientist or the engineer, and not the local health department? Forty years it lasts, just per se, and it fails. What recourse does the homeowner have then?
So, so there is an expected lifespan of a septic system. So a septic system is a man-made product. So just like everything, there is a life cycle to it. For, if you can get 20 years out of a septic system, that is the average lifespan of a septic system. So that is why you've got the initial and you've got the mandated by law repair area. So in the case of a private option permit, they have to designate both the initial and the repair area. So in that particular scenario, we would pull out your private option permit because hopefully we still have permits from 1972. So we would just shake off the dust, see where their designated repair area would be, and then issue for the, issue the repair that was designated by the consultant.
Okay.
Or whatever legislatively we're mandated to do and able to do at the time. But yes, so if, if, if let's say you had a, a private option permit issued last year, your system's failing, that would be the procedure that we would.
So you wouldn't necessarily have to go back to those engineers?
No, we would.
The public health department can say, the repair area is here, go for it.
Right. Now, in good faith, we would tell you, hey, you might want to get with your consultant to let them know that your system's malfunctioning, see if there's anything that they want to do. And we, we actually would work together. We're in a situation right now where the system was damaged, the homeowner, anyway, the system was damaged. And so we are, we're working with it. And it was courtesy that we advised the homeowner to, to work with the consultant. And we're keeping the consultant in the loop because it is his permit. And so, yeah, we're working together as a team.
I'm going to ask one more question. When we, in these reports that we get on the stuff we approve or not.
Are you talking about the soils report?
No, 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 no. Like the zoning report we had for Sawyers today. There's always a section that says Pitt County Environmental Health.
Yes.
Right? And then there's a bullet point.
Yes.
You made a comment that, that on those engineered options, that that, is that the comment you're talking, may not always be under office?
So, so at any point during development, they may have not made contact with our office yet. So, for example, if they are thinking about doing private option permitting, they may have, they may reach out to us and say, hey, I'm, I'm going to be sending you 20 private option permits, just to let you know. So our comments may be, developer has made contact with us and indicated that they're going to do private option permit. Or they may not have made any contact with us at that point. So there are times when they have not made contact with us at the preliminary plat submission for review, simply because number one, when they make contact with us for application, its fee is $400 a lot. So if they're applying for you for 30 lots, then they would give me $400 times 30 lots. And if you don't approve it, then, you know, if I've already started the work, they're not getting a refund. So, so that's why the caveat in our comments is, they must be evaluated. Now, recently, we've asked that the consultants, the licensed soil scientist consultants start making comments on maps and everything like that if they're the ones doing the soil work and providing those comments to planning and zoning. Because it, we don't want to say there's no comment from environmental health because it's a private option permit. Because we want to, we want someone to be able to say that there is soil work to support a septic system, whether that soil work being done by environmental health or a private consultant. And we've been working with planning and zoning staff on getting those. Did that answer your question?
I think so. I, I think, I think there's still stuff for us to learn and figure out.
So.
I guess let me ask one final.
Okay.
Just to, because I know there'd be more work on this. So if it is a private option for a subdivision development, and you're just doing this checklist function that you have to do.
Yep.
There is a potential that there will be no comment from environmental health or a comment from the consultant.
There, there would have to be a comment from someone. So the way that, and I'm going to let James correct me, but my understanding is, is that every lot for you to be able to approve a subdivision, you've got to have something from someone that says this lot is suitable for a septic system. Am I correct?
I don't think that's true.
For?
We, we don't, that's not true.
For, for final?
We approve things that aren't suitable for septic.
Let me step in as far as the process goes. Again, preliminary plats, you won't get that information.
Right.
We've got a proposal, we've got kind of the general layout. But before, if it requires a construction plan, we're going to have the soils information and someone's going to verify, whether it's Angie's office or the soil scientist. We just ran into the issue with a newer subdivision where we required the soil scientist to provide that information. She couldn't have, she couldn't move forward with the review like normal. We had to get it from someone else because they opted for that. So just know, either the construction plan, if it's one required, or the final plat, let's just say the road front lots, we're going to have that information.
But since the planning board approves it before the construction plan is submitted, you know, we're typically out of the loop on the matter of soil suitability. Isn't that true?
I wouldn't say totally because we're giving you as much information as, as, is required right now. The question is, what additional information, what is appropriate, even if you want to look at it that way? How much information should be given at a preliminary plat stage when we know roads, drainage systems, other things may change. And if we've already written all those permits, as Angie's talked about, all those are going to have to be adjusted.
Yes.
So everything got to move through.
But the soil doesn't change, just the same as it was 100 years ago.
No, the soil's not going to change. But the system that's been laid out in those soils would have to change if you got everything at a preliminary plat stage.
And, and one thing about the soils map that you, you get with the soils delineations that I've, I've seen come through preliminary plats and everything like that. So what you have is you have a licensed soil scientist who has done a soils, who has done soils work, has given a soils delineation. Then you provide, he provides that to another consultant. And that consultant, who's actually looking at, okay, how can I make as many, as many pieces of this pie as possible for the lots? So then they overlay. So that soils delineation, those lines are so fluid. And the soils in Pitt County are some of the most challenging soils in the state of North Carolina because literally on a lot, you can go five feet and you could go 36 inches and then you can go and dig a completely unsuitable hole. So those soil delineations change drastically. And so just because we see that, let's say the back area of a lot is, is labeled all D soils, we're still going to go back there and check. So those soil maps and those delineations are very, very fluid and literally are just a reference and not, not necessarily a working, a working model that we use. So for our, for our evaluation. Any other questions that I can provide to you tonight? All right. If you ever want to know about tattoos, swimming pools, meth lab remediation, anything like that, you just let us know and we'll, we'll give you a presentation.
Angela, thank you for our education tonight. And by the way, I think environmental health department is probably in pretty good hands. Okay?
Absolutely.
James?
Yes, sir. Okay, we'll go get back on our little process here. So, kind of had a three-pronged approach to this particular item tonight, a little overview of our subdivision amendments, getting Angie to bring forward some of her information. And again, that's, that's just the tip of the iceberg. But we also, kind of running along those lines, really thought it would be appropriate to have a committee set up to look more closely at these proposed amendments. So in your package tonight, page 85, also on your screen, is our proposed structure for the committee. And again, we feel like certainly there need to be some planning board members on that committee. We're also suggesting a couple of developers as well as a professional engineers. You've heard from Angie tonight, there are engineers that are designing septic systems now. Certainly the engineers are also designing the layout for the subdivision. So, Mr. Chairman, that's what we were bringing forward for your consideration tonight. If you'd like to move forward with that, that would give us some time to also recruit some other prospective members, even outside of the planning board members, if you proceed this way. There's also an option, we could just simply work through the planning board to come up with these amendments. But I think, and we've already heard from some of the development community, they would prefer to be involved in bringing forward some of these amendments. So we welcome your consideration of this committee proposal and welcome any questions you might have about it.
Thank you, sir. So at this time, for the committee, for the board members, let's decide, are you pleased with this suggested committee composition that's laid out here? If you're okay with it, we're going to entertain a motion to accept the structure of this committee. Or if there's something that you want to see different, we need to hear that.
I think it's important to have all the constituents involved. So I think the structure is fine.
Okay.
And look. Put that into a form of a motion.
Okay.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion and a second, that this is the suggested, or this will be the committee composition. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor of the motion then? Let it be known, we're saying, well, we're raising right in. Been that all night. All opposed, like saying? The motion passes, James, as far as the composition.
Now, I don't know if you want to go about looking or determining now or at some other time, Mr. Chairman, if you would like to designate the planning board members. And we'll be bringing them back to you, also the other suggestions for the development community.
Let me suggest to the board, I would accept it this time, or at least a show of hands of anyone that would like to participate on this committee. Or at the same time, to let you know, I'm prepared to make appointments and we'll see where that goes. Okay? Any volunteers? I'll put it there.
I volunteer.
Okay, I have two volunteers.
Who was the second one?
Thompson and Fred. Now I'm going to ask Mr. Charles McGlonhorn if he would volunteer.
Yes, sir, I'll volunteer.
So, that being said, that's the committee from the planning board that I'd like to appoint.
That's as good as we could ask for tonight, Mr. Chairman. So we'll be bringing you back some other prospective members. And again, appreciate your willingness to work outside of the normal planning board realm. And we'll be bringing more information back together. We'll keep this all, hopefully in earnest in the new year and get this amendment language together for you. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm moving on to the other items, or Eric is.
Eric?
Yes, sir, thank you. We just have a, a quick monthly update on our vision Pitt County 2045 progress. As you know, in terms of completed steps, October 19th, we conducted the third steering committee meeting here. And with our next steps, I'd like to announce that we do have some public input meetings that are coming up. We sent a big email blast out yesterday. I think all of y'all were included on it, or should have been. We're going to be meeting Tuesday, November 29th. That'll be at the Community Schools and Recreation Building. That's going to be out at Alice Keane Park on County Home Road. And then Thursday, December 1st, out at North Pitt High School. And this will be an opportunity for people to come out, review the draft recommendations of the plan. We'll have a presentation and just be able to answer any questions anybody might have about that draft document. We're also developing a virtual presentation. Actually, Jake, if you recall our consultant, he was here this morning and filmed it. So we'll have a presentation that'll be available. Our wonderful PIO staff in the back is editing it as we speak, I'm sure. And they'll be presenting that to, providing that to us. And we'll have that up on the county's YouTube page and also have that on the project website. And we've been talked about maybe cutting down a shorter version that we just put on, on social media just to kind of hit the, the most important bullet points. With that, we're going to continue to just keep developing that draft plan and the future land use map. And at this point, your fourth and final steering committee meeting we have scheduled, we're still, still to be, to be determined. We're looking at probably January or so. And then kind of wrapping this project up, excuse me, in February or March. So I'd be glad to have, answer any questions anybody might have.
Any questions from the board, comments? Thank you, sir.
And just as one last note, we've got our envision Pitt County 2045.com website. That's our project website. So if anybody's got any, needs any additional information, we'll, they can go to that website and get what they need. And it's got all the dates and everything for our upcoming input meetings as well.
Thank you, sir. Ben?
Good evening again. Provide one final update this evening. The Pitt County Comprehensive Transportation Plan, the last few months, I've given updates on some of our public hearings and our public input meetings. Just a reminder, we've been through this. But this is a plan we've worked with the local NC DOT officials, both locally and at the state, the local RPO, the NPO, as well as all the municipalities within the county. We started this in September of 2020. And this is a long-range plan to identify transportation needs through the year 2045. Public involvement, we have had one public input session. That was on Monday evening at the Community Schools and Recreation Building on County Home Road. Had about 24. Recreation Building on County Home Road. Had about 20 folks come out to that, so decent turnout. We do have another session, um, scheduled for tomorrow evening. That's Thursday, November 17th, at North Pitt High School, um, in their cafeteria. That's going to be from 5 o'clock to 7. Again, we'll have county staff there, as well as DOT staff to answer any questions with MAPS set up, as well as some interactive laptops to look at specific projects, if anybody wants to look at that. So if anybody can come to that, we certainly welcome you. Um, we also have the public involvement session recorded virtually that's been online for a few weeks. I think we have about 130 views on that last time I looked. That link can be found at the website there on the county's, uh, planning department website, and public comment can be submitted virtually. There's a link to that as well on the website. So you can view that and submit comments online if you are unable to attend the public input sessions tomorrow. Um, just the remaining schedule on that, local, uh, public hearings will be held in late spring and early summer of next year. And, uh, some MAPS survey results and other information, the project website that's hosted by NCDOT is there on the screen as well, um, for additional information. So any questions on that, I'm happy to answer, but otherwise, welcome anybody, um, to the public input session tomorrow evening.
Good deal. Any questions or comments to Ben? Thank you for the.
Thank you.
Report. Uh, James?
So to wrap that up, there's plenty of opportunities to help plan for Pitt County, whether it's transportation, our land use plan, a lot of different opportunities. We welcome folks to come out. If you're still not able to come out, for whatever reasons, the same type presentations and the materials are online, along with the comment forms, there's no excuse not to get plenty of input. So, few informational items in your package tonight, and of course, always, there's a lot more information on our webpage. Uh, feel free to go online and check that out, as well as any of the ordinances that we talk about from time to time here tonight. So, uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all we have for you tonight.
Good deal. Let me personally thank all our board members for being here tonight and, uh, so we could conduct our business. I would thank, and probably shouldn't just call out a person, but Ms. Reddington, thank you for staying with us the whole time, okay?
Very important.
Thank you, ma'am. And I appreciate our safety officer in the back being with us. Thank you, sir. And all our staff. And, uh, I appreciate what our staff does and the duties they perform in getting us the information and so that we can make, uh, hopefully intelligent decisions for the citizens of Pitt County. Any addresses, any remarks from anyone on the board? I think that's a sign to tell me something. Uh, I would share this with you, that with the season that we're in, before we meet again, Happy Thanksgiving, okay?
Same to everybody.
That's, that's coming up, and I guess we're wondering or thinking if we're going to have enough for our December meeting or, or not.
Deadlines for those submittals of either rezoning plans or subdivision plans is a few days away, and we know how people typically run right up to the deadlines. We don't know yet as to answer that.
Okay, good deal.
So we'll let you know as soon as possible.
Sounds good.
Call for the December meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you again, James, for what you and all your staff do. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Motion made and seconded. So called.